Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting of May 2024. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We're excited to have some very special guests with us this evening. I'm going to move into our second agenda item, which is awards and recognition. And today we are going to be introducing some very special teachers and leaders of the Future Innovators Club. The Future Innovators Club is comprised of 4th graders interested in engineering, figuring out how things work, improving on a process, and computer science. This club provides opportunities for students to work together to solve short-term engineering challenges using teamwork, creative problem-solving, pattern recognition, perseverance, and more. Kristin Rice started this club last year after school for 4th graders, and it was run by Starbase employees. This year, the club is being led by Granby Public School mentors, as the Starbase program is no longer able to support it, but they are providing resources. Anne Marzo from Granby Memorial High School teamed up with Kristin Rice this year, along with the support of Stephanie LaPointe and James Jansky from Wells Road Intermediate School. A website has been built to capture each of the sessions. Future sessions will include a computer science simulation, currently being developed by Computer Science Club members, and robotics club demonstration by members of the robotics club. At this time, we would love to introduce and bring up to the podium James Jansky, Stephanie LaPointe, Anne Marzo, and Kristin Rice. Please come on up. It's my understanding you guys have a little PowerPoint presentation for us as well.
Yes.
That'd be great.
We just put a couple of slides together to kind of talk about the value of the club, really, and what we feel we accomplished. So we named the club this year, the Future Innovators Club. It stemmed out of Starbase 2.0, as you said, from the previous season that Kristin and I teamed up on as well. Can I?
Yep.
There you go. Oh, okay. Okay, so I just want to put a slide together to reflect that this really was a partnership and an example of some of the great things we can do to add value across the communities. And as I was putting this together, it really dawned on me that this is really an out, a reflection, or not a reflection, but a kind of result of the value of the vertical meetings we've been having, and the vertical PD, because I learned about Starbase as a high school teacher from a side conversation at a vertical PD with a Wells Road teacher. It wasn't even Kristin, it was another Wells Road teacher who had just come from the wonderful Starbase campout, or the week-long event. And she was talking about that, and I remembered that the following fall, when I was trying to think, what can I do with my computer science club? How can we get involved? What are some things in the community? So then I reached out to Starbase and asked them if we could talk. And when I met with Ted at Starbase, he's like, well, we're tied toward intermediate and middle schoolers, so we really don't have anything for you. He said, but I just talked to Kristin Rice over at Wells, and we're going to do this new program called 2.0, where we're going over to Wells Road School, and we could use some help. You want to help? And I was like, we want to help. So last year, we provided the mentors while Starbase ran the program. And I couldn't believe the response we got from the high schoolers of wanting to participate. We had more than we needed, and it really went well. Last year, the kids just were there to provide the support and aid the kids, but Starbase ran everything, as you said. And then this year, when Starbase said, we can't do it, but you can. They said, and its team can. And I was like, yeah, and its team can. And it worked out fantastically. Starbase provided us the resources we needed. My computer science club then morphed it into something a little bit different, because we said, well, we didn't even have anything computer science-related in it. So we built an extra session that was tied to computer science. And then one of the volunteers was also on the robotics team. So he said, I have an idea. What do you think about demoing what the robotics team does? And so I said, that sounds like a fantastic idea. So we added that session in, too. So we did, we ended up doing seven sessions. And again, I'm not doing the right thing here. Somebody's got to guide me.
Catherine.
I got it.
Catherine, this is great.
We're aware of the mission. So I may need to go over that, but I'll have you go to the next slide. So this one, okay. This is a picture of our group, the high schoolers and the middle schoolers. We ended up having seven sessions. We planned for eight, one snow day. We always come back on one snow day. We eliminated the least interesting of all the sessions, we thought. And we did six sessions that we had done the previous year with Starbase. I let the kids, the high schoolers that participated last year, decide which sessions they thought would be the most interesting. And then we added in the computer simulation simulation and the robotics team demo at the end, that my kids designed completely on their own. So it really gave the high schoolers the opportunity to kind of step forward, say, yeah, last year I was comfortable being a helper. This year, I'm going to step forward even further and be a leader and a designer. And they designed it, and we looked at each of these. Survey provided the materials, but we looked at each of the sessions that they had planned and tweaked it, so the kids got to make it their own. So it really was fantastic. And I believe, you guys can see it more, but the 4th graders loved it. It was really just a win-win across the board. So again, we went from mid-January to mid-March, and every week. And this year, more than last, I felt like we had engagement throughout, which was fantastic. Sometimes last year, I think we did 12, because we tweeted, and they started to peter at the end. This was perfect. So really tweaked things and went well. So I just want to end with some, I asked my kids for some feedback. What did you think of it? And these are some of the main comments that kind of spawned from it. I've experienced leadership mentoring and communication skills by helping lead some sessions. As a mentor, we can offer guidance when they were stuck in a challenge, steer them towards a new solution, different than what they came up with, and help them identify what went wrong and what they could do to make it better. I learned how to better communicate to the kids that failing's okay, and that it's all right to give it a restart. And that was really one of the main sessions. One of the things that the Starbase employees really taught my kids, because they trained the mentors last year, is we're teaching these kids that failing is good, that it's okay, that it doesn't work, because you're going to learn from that, and you're going to try it again, and it's going to be better. I enjoyed the process, the whole process, from the start, what we had to plan out the sessions, prepare the materials needed to execute the program, then present the challenges to the kids. So that, these comments here are from kids that were here last year and this year, like, change may have made it even better. Seeing them struggle through it and work together to solve the engineering problems made me realize how lucky it is for them to be exposed to these kinds of activities, and also it allows them to grow early on. Comments from high schoolers, that's really cool. It gave me experience working with the kids, which was what I was looking for going into a career as a teacher. So what I did is I didn't limit the mentors just to the computer science club. We wouldn't have had enough computer science, it's still a little small. So I went out, reached out to kids that were interested in teaching and working with kids, and they joined us, too. So they didn't even care about engineering so much, as they wanted to be with the kids. And it was a great blend. The best part was seeing the kids' faces when they succeeded at a task and when they even failed, but still found joy in the process. So it was really cool to see the maturity in the high schoolers from what they were getting with the 4th graders. And then this experience helped me grow as a high schooler because of how I stepped out of my comfort zone. This experience allowed me to interact with people more, and it was like, when I can help someone else. And I just wanted to end with that and remind you that these are computer science, mostly computer science kids, who hate to lead things, who are not, they need to communicate more. They needed this experience. So it was hard for them to say, I'm going to be, you know, my computer science class is so quiet, so I'm going to be continuing, I'm going to lead sessions. And they really did step out of the box so well. It was really exciting to see, for me to watch my kids do this. So here's some highlights from the webpage.
So Catherine, if you click on the highlight link, it'll bring it to their website. There you go.
Okay, so this is the beautiful website that Stephanie put together for us. And if you scroll down, I'm not sure if I can do that. Can I do that? Okay. You can see, I'm just going to go to these pictures, because I think they were fantastic. Every week, Stephanie kind of, you can see on their faces, captured the kind of the interest and the joy in their eyes. Week three, we were doing just a slow, it was a slow race. They had to design something where the marshmallow travels slowest, as opposed to fastest. Week four, we were building a structure so that they had to protect this little marshmallow, how we call him. Then he wasn't allowed to get wet. So they had to, they were working with popsicle sticks and tape and cardboard pieces, tiny cardboard pieces, and they had to come up with some sort of structure that would protect him, as I dumped water on his. So it was, and it was fun to see, you could see their faces. Ah, is he dry, is he not dry? Week five, they were building, it was unstable bridges, so they had to build a bridge with straw. And as soon as they succeeded, we said, okay. We pulled the tables further apart, and they had to try again. So it never, the challenge never ended. And then, again, I'm not sure how to scroll. Thank you. There was the computer simulation week, which was totally different. It was more paper-based, they had to think like a computer. And then we ended with the robotics demo. And those pictures were kind of dark, so they're a little gray there. But that was just fantastic, because what that was, was actually give us a great opportunity to sell a team that I didn't need. I had never seen the robotics team, what they produced before. I was blown away by it, but two of the robotics team members came out, presented to the kids, and brought one of their robots. And the kids got to drive their robot, and now I'm confident that that team's going to, they have some future members of that team now. Because that was just a fantastic way to end things, and for them to see what their future can be if they continue to be interested in engineering. So it really was, I think, just a success all around.
Yeah, it was very cool. It was my first time being a part of it, but I absolutely loved the whole thing, from seeing the high schoolers be the leaders, to watching the kids struggle with the tasks, and then succeeding. I mean, you can't ask for anything better than what it was.
Exactly.
And the 4th graders really looked up to their mentors. They were really excited to work with them every week.
That's great, that's great to hear.
How many 4th graders were engaged in the project?
I think 18.
So, yeah, we had to keep the numbers small.
I'm sitting here thinking, how can we get this for all 4th graders?
So last year, I had to run, it was a random lottery, multifaceted. So who was interested? If you're interested, bring back this paper. And then all the names that came back went into a random name picker, did all of that, picked the random names, you know. And we had to keep it small, it was a Starbase stipulation that they could only have a certain ratio of adults and kids. And so then we copied the same thing this year. And if we wanted to run 150 kids, we probably could have. Like, it was, it was pretty popular. And honestly, the idea came from, you know, my lens of 4th graders, I want to get 4th graders doing more of this stuff. How can we do that? And then Ted was kind of the in-between guy to make the connection. And it really just showed how we can work vertically, like, out of our buildings. We just can do so much stuff, just cool. So it's finding the right people and, like, the right energy to move it forward, and, you know, starting small to keep it good and positive, and then finding a way to kind of amp it up, is what I see down the road.
And it really does the ideal size.
It was. I'm sure it was. It just sounds so wonderful.
Yeah.
It's great, thank you.
That's great, Ted. Do you mind if I open it up for questions from other members of the board? I don't want to put you on the spot or anything. This sounds like a great program. I just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to ask any questions. I knew Rosemarie would have one.
Curious how many high school mentors you've had?
We ended up having, I think, nine that stayed committed to it. I had about 12 that tried, and as the dates get posted, we compete with sports and things like that. But we ended up having, I think, nine. And most of them, like, they're not required to make every session, but most of them made, probably 60% of them. We always had enough, which was perfect. We always had at least one mentor to three kids. Sometimes we had two mentors to four kids.
And one other question. And is this something that, could you see, because it sounded like seven sessions was probably the most engagement. Could you run it in cycles, sessions, so that more kids get the opportunity?
I think it's possible to run maybe two a year and not one. Like, that's, I guess, they're going to do another one this year. At the high school, we just, we compete so much after school, that it's hard to get enough kids. But I think it's possible, like, this worked really well. We got the kids that weren't doing winter sports. But I knew we had to finish as soon as spring sports started, because that's what we started to lose some mentors last year. And it worked really ideally for that. I think the last session was the only conflict, and we didn't have a couple of kids that could make it. So it would just be depending on if we could get enough for the fall. But I would only do, I would maybe consider one fall, one winter.
And if we don't get the high schoolers, it's not the same. You need those.
Yeah, that's what we need.
It doesn't emphasize it all, it makes it a great program, it's not a good program.
And it made the kids more willing to fail, I think. The kids are much more willing to fail when they're just talking to a high schooler than they are when they're talking to a teacher.
Do they get service hours for participating in this?
They do, yes.
And that could also be a motivator to get more kids involved.
Totally, more people, yeah. But some of them didn't need them. They just wanted to do it, which was, because I told them, why don't you? So they were doing it, because they just really, really enjoyed it. And, yeah, Christine, the one who came last year and this year, she, she got it last year.
So maybe if you advertise more broadly in the high school to the whole student body, it sounded like you focused on your group.
Oh, you totally did, yeah.
Oh, you did, okay.
Keep it there.
But, yeah. You can definitely advertise it. It's more just making, finding the kids that don't have, and keep less. But, yeah, definitely, yeah, service hours.
It sounds like a fantastic program, and then something that most, if not all, of our kids could benefit from.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's great. Does anybody else have any additional questions?
It's just nice to see the kids excited about STEM type of work, because we, as a country, don't produce enough people that are proficient in STEM. So it's really nice to see the children engaged with STEM activities.
And I believe, and I sort of made it this way, it was pretty much 50/50 in regards to access. Yeah, which was, I think it's fair. We tend to lose the boys, and I see the girls.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So thank you so much for coming out. I really appreciate you being here. Here's a couple certificates and a little, little treat. I want my little. Thank you so much. I'm so afraid of my word.
That's lovely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the hard talking presentation for our kids. It really means a lot. It's a really valuable program. Could I have to take a picture of this for you?
It's great, it's a great amount to talk.
Okay, very nice. Thank you, congratulations.
All right. Moving along, next up, we have a public comment. Granby community engagement and attendance of Board of Education's public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to about five minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. We're going to be starting with individuals in the room. If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment, please enter something in the chat, so we can get you into the queue. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make public comment tonight? Please come on up.
Hi, let me just get my notes together, please.
Of course.
My name is Lauren Ansham. I'm from East Haven. I have a pretty serious matter I'd like to talk to you about. I know I'm not from Granby today. I apologize, I know, I shouldn't be here.
Were the public comments meant for residents of Granby?
What was that, ma'am?
Public comments meant for residents of Granby?
Oh, public comments just for residents of Granby?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I understand. See, this was the first board meeting that you guys had. My daughter was kidnapped by the Board of Ed on Thursday from East Haven School for RARA. And I understand you don't want to hear what I have to say. But illegally, you guys need permission slips, so I wanted to come town to town to please make you aware that in your school district, you really should have permission slips signed by every single parent before you leave the premises of any school. And I'm not sure if anyone's just uneducated on the matter, but that's very strange to just, I've been a mother here for 10 years in Connecticut.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
I know you don't want to hear any of that.
We're going to proceed on to our meeting.
You told me you were supposed to be here tonight. I don't see him here.
Who?
Governor Ned Lamont, he said this was going to be like your guys' first get-together for some reunion, so I just came here.
I don't think you're in the right meeting.
I'm coming to.
Ned Lamont was not coming to this meeting.
This is the board event meeting, correct?
For Granby.
I understand, it's for Granby. I'm coming to every board event meeting I can, because it's an overstep of parental rights. You can't take children from school without parental consent.
Ma'am, this is not relevant to our order of business and what's going on in the meeting.
That's fine, I'm all set, thank you.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to make public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right. Moving on to Zoom, is there anyone present on Zoom who wishes to make public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, I am closing public comment. We are moving on to reports and discussion for an update on superintendent goals for 2023 to 2024. Superintendent Burke?
Thank you. Okay, so I do also have a PowerPoint, and I just have a few remarks to start. Thank you, Linda, I forgot to grab the curve when I was up. So it really feels like just yesterday that I sat in front of you to present the idea of my goals as the new superintendent in Granby Public Schools. And here we are, embarking on just the last month and a half or so of the school year, which truly is hard to believe. But I am grateful for this opportunity to share some of our growth and the process as it unfolds. You know, the goals that we have identified for both student achievement and communication don't end. These are goals that are ongoing and really will remain a very important part of the work here in Granby. This is very much for me as a new superintendent, the beginning of the journey, but certainly these goals are not new. These are goals that all school districts aim to achieve. And, you know, I'm really excited to share with you some of the ways that we are working towards achieving excellence for Granby schools and really reaching our full potential as a school district and evolving to be able to support each and every child. So the goal is familiar to you. This is the first goal in Granby Public Schools' strategic plan, and it absolutely remains the lodestar of the work of the district. What is new is that we added a goal, the superintendent-specific goal, related to growth, really amplifying the idea that we wish for every single child, all students in the school district, to make measurable growth towards their individual goals. We really want to ensure that all students are making academic growth, social and emotional growth, and meeting their individual targets, moving confidently at a pace that will achieve their success as they walk across that stage at graduation. The proficiency goals, very specific to our student learning and achievement, are listed for you here. These goals have been shared broadly across all of our schools with administrators and team leaders, instructional coaches, and even the students themselves in pockets have had opportunities to set individual goals towards their own targets for mastery. So we will speak much more in detail related to each of these proficiency targets when we have actual data in front of us. Tonight, I'm not presenting data, it's a little too soon. We are currently wrapping up our administration of the Smarter Balance Goals, Smarter Balance Assessments, and Next Gen Science. We're just doing makeup and finishing that work up at the middle school. And we are engaged fully in all of our in-district summative assessments right now. And so what you will see tonight is just a little bit of the background, and then we will provide data as it becomes available to us over the next couple of weeks. So I wanted to provide a little bit of context for the goal around student learning and achievement. This is not work that is done alone. No individual in the school district allows for a student's individual or collective growth. The entire team takes part in that achievement. Certainly, the student themselves and their family take part in that achievement, as well as each and every person that works alongside. Our teachers are the primary driver for student success. And I wanted to highlight how we, as a school district, have messaged this work to our faculty, and also how we have really worked to develop a mindset that is centered on teach-yourself efficacy, you know, really believing that I, as the teacher, can make a difference and do, in fact, make a difference for children. And then also the belief that every single child does have the necessary ability to achieve. And so the first bullet that you see up here is a message that I carried throughout the district and shared with administrators and leaders and teachers across the district around the message that all kids can. And it's vague intentionally, because all kids can, and what is it that we're asking of them? All kids can, you know, achieve on the stage. All kids can write an essay at a grade-level expectation. All kids can read or do math, or, you know, fill in the blank. All kids can present in front of their peers. But the deeper understanding behind that is that we sometimes have to think about our practices and do things a little differently, and that's bullet number two. We engaged in an administrative team book study to really sort of measure and reflect on our current practices, to say, you know what, maybe needs to be done a little differently, or what do we maybe have to rethink in order to reach children? And then we also really wanted to develop an understanding of the differentiation and the instructional leadership that is required so that students can be successful. That belief in children is a good starting point, but it's not enough. We have to have the right tools. And so the list here really identifies some of the highlights of the work. You've heard about quite a bit of this over the year at different budget, at different Board of Education meetings. Budget, it's on my mind still. And certainly through the curriculum committee work, you've seen some of this as well. So I won't spend a lot of time on it, just to identify a couple of key pieces, really emphasizing student-centered data. We talk a lot in this forum about Smarter Balance Assessment, Next Gen Science, SAT, PSAT, and those are very important measures. They do not inform instruction. It just takes too long to get that data back. They inform our curriculum, they inform our instruction, they inform where the students are starting off in the fall and how we might want to group them for instruction or support them. But it doesn't give real-time data in the moment for small group instruction, targeting skills, individual goal-setting. And so really looking at the data that we have at our fingertips to understand children is super important to this work. Without it, we won't have maximized the opportunity every time a teacher is with a child. And so this list is really about student learning and achievement through the eyes of our educators, you know, using meaningful practice and feedback. The board members that were on the learning walks this past Monday likely saw a lot of feedbacks, small group instruction, and less stand and deliver of the same content to all 20 students. So knowing that we need to differentiate. Jen Parsons, along with others on her team, have been really hard at work to launch EduClimber, Climber, and DNA. And that's really an opportunity for our teachers to own the data and monitor student progress. As you know, through the budget process, we did advocate for an additional position, which I'm happy we will be able to see through next year, for a certified teacher to provide just another layer of math intervention. We definitely know that we will continue to see math scores that are not fully hitting our targeted proficiency. So we need to continue to work. So we need to continue to work in that area. The next slide is a little bit more in alignment with individual student growth. I already started to sort of merge into some of these ideas. But if we believe that all kids can, then we have to create the environment that supports that targeted individual growth. So individualized small group instruction, setting targets and allowing children to sort of graph and understand their own progress. Working with our special education team to closely monitor students' individualized needs through a 504 or a P E T process or an I E P process. We have really maximized our use of IXL. Our math coaches have done outstanding work to support students with IXL as we have with our reading and other tiered interventions. And really maximizing the instructional specialists at Wells Road School and Kelly Lane School and Grandby Memorial Middle School to really assist teachers and students in that crafted instruction that really identifies those tiers of support that kids need. And I couldn't leave a slide around student growth without really identifying the needs around student mental health and behavioral challenges. These are real challenges in our classrooms and in our schools. And so we have definitely found a growing need for support in those areas. So knowing that we can't necessarily put a Band-Aid on that and teach math. If a child isn't at the table for learning, they're not going to be able to learn. So really working with each individual child and families and teachers to support that work has been a big part of this goal that maybe isn't as measurable, but is certainly warranted time and attention. So as I just mentioned, we have two opportunities, next board meeting and the board meeting after that, where you will receive specific data presentations in the same format that was shared with you this fall so that you can see the PSAT and SAT data. And then you may remember, Colleen Baba and Colleen Greer did share with you the STAR data, the IXL data, all that other type of data. So it's not as neat and orderly as Smarter Balance scores, but it's the real work that we use and it's predictive to help us know how do we expect kids will do on Smarter Balance. So it's the best data that we have at the time to share with you. And then certainly over the summer, Smarter Balance and Next Gen Science scores come in. And as is always shared with you, we will organize those and share them out in the fall. Are there any questions about student achievement and data? Because the second part, I'm going to move into the communications goals. So I just thought I might pause here to see if there's any specific questions about anything to share.
I have two questions. May I? On the slide that's titled Focus on Student Learning and Achievement, the district focus on meaningful practice and feedback. I think I know what that means, but I just wanted to make sure. Are you referring to homeworks and how? Or I shouldn't put words into your mouth like-
Sure.
You know, how are we doing that?
So Jen and Grandby Schools, the instructional leadership team, started this work before I came on board, working with a consultant to really identify core feedback, no, I'm sorry, core practices that have a direct correlation to student overall achievement in the classroom. And practice and feedback is this year's focus. Is that correct, Jen? And so when we're in classrooms on learning walks or observing teachers or whatever it might be, we're looking for high-quality feedback and opportunities for students to practice with that critical feedback and guidance. So obviously, in a very simple way, you know, gone are the days of like a sticker and good work on a piece of paper. We want the feedback to be very prescriptive. I like how you did X. I'm looking for you to do Y. And providing that type of feedback. Jen is probably cringing as I try to wear my curriculum hat. Would you want to add anything to that, Jen?
Yeah, I would say the focus on practice has really been around, is it students working in partnerships? Is it working in small group? Is it supported by a teacher? Is it on your own? We haven't branched that necessarily into homework yet, but it's more about the in-class activities. And are they aligned to an area that we really focused on last year, which is clear shared outcomes? So do we know what we're learning, why we're learning it, where we're going? Is the work aligned? And when you're practicing, are there a variety of formats where feedback is given?
I think that's really important and I'm glad that that is something that we focused on this year. One of the, just anecdotal piece of information, which I'm sure you've heard is, you know, for the, on the homework piece, some home, some, and I've heard this more in the high school than elementary, that homeworks are looked at as, in terms of completion and not in terms of accuracy. And so I think that that's an area of opportunity for us to really find out whether our students, even though, you know, when they're completing it, are they completing it correctly? And therefore, understand and can master the skill that is being practiced? Or whether they're just reinforcing a misunderstanding of the material?
Yeah, and you'll see on a future slide under the communication component, we actually have identified grading and those types of systems as a growth area that we didn't tackle this year, but it's on the docket for next year because I think some of it is around the communication of what is the expectation with this particular assignment? And how am I being expected? Is it a study guide with practice for a quiz that's tomorrow? And so the quiz is being graded, but maybe not the practice or vice versa? So we've heard that from students when I held the focus groups in the fall. And I think it aligns to exactly what you're speaking to. That's a goal on our communication plan for next year.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else before I move on? Okay, so the second goal that we focused on this year as a school district is goal number two from the existing Grandby Strategic Plan around community engagement. And when I started this year, really was crystal clear to me that we were going to embark on a year where transparency, communication, re-establishing trust, and really building relationships as a new leader around the work of the school district. And so this goal popped right off the page as a really essential partner to student achievement and growth. We developed a rigorous plan in late September to create a communications plan. And the checkboxes that you see here are representative of the different components that led us to the development of the communications plan. There is a copy of the communications plan in the packet for anyone that wishes to take a look at it. I've highlighted many of the components in the PowerPoint, but then you do have that to reference if you wish. But we did all of the things listed there between September and December. We held focus groups. We helped, we conducted surveys and analyzed surveys. We connected with not only folks inside of our school walls, but the broader community. And we prioritized, you know, what are we doing well? What can we improve upon? And they're really ingrained in our work and our goals as we think about the needs of our community, our students, our families, and our broader community. So I'm really proud that we were able to launch this communication plan because I think that it has righted the ship in a way that has allowed everyone to look inside the work. And it took some vulnerability on the part of the administrators of our buildings and central office. It was easy for me, as a new superintendent, to say, we're going to do this bigger and better. It was already being done really well. And so growth is harder when you're already achieving at a pretty decent level. And so I think it's important to say that so much of what we discovered in the fall was that we're doing a pretty darn good job engaging and communicating with our community and our stakeholders. And yes, we can always do better. And so what you'll see over the next couple of slides is just some evidence of ways that I, as a new superintendent, have engaged with the community for my individual growth and commitment to the school district. Frankly, when you hired me, I said that I was going to learn and listen and that I was going to be visible and that I was going to form lasting partnerships that would better the school district and the community. And I'm really proud that I believe we've done that. So this particular plan, to me, was unique from others that I've taken part in or reviewed because it was squarely about two-way communication. Effective communication from entities is often about the distribution of communication. And we knew that in order to be successful, it needed to foster a positive environment through effective two-way communication. And so that is really what the goal has been about. So you will see here, and it feels a little busy. I, this PowerPoint's busier than I would like, but we have a lot we want to try to share with you. The first goal is what do our audience, what does our audience want to learn from us? What are they looking for? What are they seeking? So goal number one is really about the output from the school district. We learned immediately that the website, social media, and the drummer were the ways that the majority, the vast majority, regardless of age, regardless of student or non-student, really learned about the school district. The good, the bad, the ugly. And so we wanted to capitalize on those vehicles of communication to really push out good news and celebrations. And so I have started Superintendent Burke's page on both Facebook and Instagram. I have to say, it is time-consuming and it is a lot of work, and I have so much fun doing it. And now Katie knows. When I walk into the high school, kids are like, is this going to go on Insta? And kids are, at the secondary level, excited about it. And I think I might have more high school followers than anything else. So parents are more on Facebook, kids are more on Instagram, but I post both things on both sites and it's really fun. And the third part for people that are not on Facebook is the vast majority, I'd say maybe 75%, of what I put on those two social media sites is also on the live feed, scrolling through our homepage of the website. So depending on your preference, we are really trying to send out good news, celebration. We do also send out information, but I'm not going to send out information that's critical on a social media site because people will miss it. That has to be through our official channels of communication, web emails, texts, phone calls, which we've also used that vehicle quite a bit. So as you see up here, I wish I had a thing, like a light. The Kelly Lane eBlast is representative of eBlast that all of our schools do, using Canva, using Smore. We've really worked to make them colorful and inviting and photos. And quick, look at how bulleted they are, short and succinct and to the point so that you can find what you need. We also worked with the administration to really identify patterns so that you know that every time you get that eBlast, there's going to be a calendar component. Every time you get that eBlast, there's going to be something that is essential. If it's a lot of narrative and stories about what we've done these last few weeks, we don't read it. I don't read it. We're too busy. We also worked to organize our web pages in a way that was very clear and easy to see. The music department at Wells Road is an example up here. It is beautiful. And our music teachers worked hard to reimagine their website. It's visually pleasing. It's informative, and it's a really helpful tool for parents. And then what's great is Pauline can put in her eBlast a link to a webpage and say, check here for updates for lessons or schedules are changing or whatever it might be. Another thing that is represented here is the athletics events. In my Grandby drummer articles, which I write monthly, I've been encouraging community members to come to the school play, to come to a soccer game, to engage in the school as a mode of entertainment, even if you don't have children. And people have commented to me that they appreciate that invitation and enjoy coming. And so we updated the athletics page to make it very easy for anyone to go to the website and see the immediate C I A C schedule. So there's been a lot of nice updates that I think help audiences that are seeking a particular type of information. These are some more examples of the ways that we blast out information. QR codes are awesome. We've been using those from everything from our HR office and Jen Brown's hiring initiatives with making brochures and QR codes easy for prospective employees. The middle and high school have been collaborating for their PAC meetings. We find that by joining them creates that vertical experience. You can meet a high school parent and vice versa, so that's been a success. I try to blast out as much as I can about our students and things that they're doing. I got to be a little guest instructor in a couple of classrooms that were persuading me that chocolate milk is better than white milk. We serve both, for the record. It was a lot of fun. And so, you know, reminders and things that are simple to read, visual, and really quick. And we're getting a lot of positive response with that. You know, in addition, some of the things that our principals are doing and our faculty is doing, in addition to the weekly eBlast, they're sending out calendars with special events. You know, Mrs. Greer has her fifth grade events. There's a whole calendar up on the website for parents to be invited in. There's a lot of really easy-to-see ways that you can engage in the classroom. I think I'll keep track. There's so much. This is another point of pride for us. We worked, and by we, I mean Jen Parsons and our instructional leaders, our coaches, they worked around the clock when I asked for curriculum documents to be ready by open house. I felt strongly that if we were going to have a curriculum night, parents needed to leave with something in hand that was a curriculum at a glance. And so they did not disappoint. Within the first few weeks of school, to not even, it was like three weeks, they developed complete curriculum at a glances for every grade level. Those are posted on our website, which I'll show in just one second. And also along the bottom, you see the buttons for our media center. There was questions. There was wonderings around the library catalog. What types of books are in our libraries, preschool through 12th grade? Do you have such-and-such a title in your libraries? And so we wanted to make sure that members of the community and students and parents could very easily see what is housed in our libraries. And so we revamped all of the library pages. Just to be clear, this information was here before I started as superintendent. It was just a little harder to find, right? So we cleaned up everything. Everybody has the same button. Everybody has the same Sora, Epic, Ballot symbols that you can easily see. And Jen met with the library media specialist and her assistant, Andy Buckle, was a huge help in really streamlining everything and making it easy so that parents and interested folks in the community have a place to go and learn about what we're teaching children and what resources we're using. Catherine, could I ask you to just open up that website for a quick second just to hit the curriculum resources for families? Thank you. So this is Jen's updated curriculum page. Each one of those is a button. Just click on any one of them. Thank you. And this will grow over time. There's folders where you can see all of the different units of study and family newsletters all in one place. You can see the At-A-Glance curriculum guides that have each of the subject. So Jen has always had resources available to parents. Now it's a little bit more comprehensive and a little bit easier to find. And we're really proud of this. It was a huge undertaking right at the start of the year, which is a very busy time. And I think it served our community well. Okay, Catherine, we can go back to the PowerPoint. Thank you. So when you think about the first goal, we together have accomplished many components of the plan that you have in your packet. A number of improvements to the web- A number of improvements to the website. It's just ongoing work, and there's still more to do. I'm so proud of the way that our teachers and administrators are sharing our school success. I see our Kelly Lane and Wells Road principals are here. They ask their teachers to at least twice a year, every single teacher, at least two times, many have done it, much more than that I know, opportunity to invite parents into the classroom for a reading celebration, math games, a poetry. I've been in for the violin and the strings, whatever it is, at least two times for your parents to be invited in, just to be a part of the classroom and celebrate. In addition, they've also held principal opportunities. You could sign up for Parent Teacher Conference with Mrs. Greer. Mrs. Baba led some PD for parents on workshopping on social emotional learning and different topics of interest. So I'm really proud of the way that this has been embraced across all of our schools. So you can see the list here, and I've already spoken to many of them. The Board of Ed has also played an important role in this communications plan. You know, all of the budget documents have been online. Monica has joined many of the superintendent's conversations as the board chair and been available and willing to answer questions as parents pose them. So, you know, this is not the effort of one, this is the effort of many. And then we have more work to do. So as I said, this is an ongoing plan. For this particular goal, we are looking to refine guidelines for grading and assignments to really make sure they're posted in a timely way. Students know what's expected of them, parents know how to gain that information. Strengthening district identity is really about uniform, graphics. We all know we're the Granby Bear. There's about six versions of a bear. It bugs me a little. So we didn't have time for that this year, but we're just gonna really dig into who is Granby? What does Granby Public Schools stand for? What matters to us? Super excited for this work in the coming year. We will be developing a new strategic plan for the next five years, and that kind of work is very exciting. I've been exploring an app where parents can just have an app on their phone, and they can see where the bus is. So this morning, we had a bus that was running late, had a little mechanical issue. Not a big deal, it was instantly taken care of. At about, you know, 7:30 a.m., a message went out to our parents, letting them know that the bus was gonna be a little delayed. But there's an app for that. There's some streamlined ways that parents can see where their child's bus is. And so we're looking at some of those things. We weren't ready to implement them this year, but by next budget season, I will have a more comprehensive plan for some of the ways that we might improve our communications in those areas. So that's the first goal. There's one more. Goal number two is all about listening. You know, how do we make ourselves available to listen, to understand, and really be available to our constituents and stakeholders, both in the school buildings and across the community, to understand what their needs are and collaborate? So I've already spoken to a number of ways that we do that, with different organizations and groups that we work closely with. Jen Parsons, Angela Aronworth, our previous director of Public Services, and Colleen Baba worked with all of the area preschools. I believe that was the first time anything like that was done, where we had directors from all the area preschools come to Kelly Lane and visit our kindergarten classrooms and preschools to see about readiness and start that vertical conversation around kids' readiness for kindergarten. And with the age change and some of the legislative changes, we thought it was an awesome opportunity for that, and we want to keep that going. So I just highlight that. There's many ways we've partnered with different community groups, but that was really cool and different. We've launched Ask GPS. So Catherine, if I could ask you to open that page. We have an opportunity for folks to submit a question at askgps@grambyschools.org, and we have a website dedicated to that. If you scroll down a little, Catherine, you can see where we enter the question that comes in. It is posted anonymously. I know who the question comes from, so that I can follow up with that person individually, but we post it anonymously, and then we provide as detailed of an answer as we can. You scroll just a little more, Catherine. So we've gotten a few questions. I would really love to encourage the community to send more. I did put it again in this month's Drummer, and we'll continue to find ways to let people know that this exists. I think it's a nice, just sort of passive way to pose a question, and then we work together to answer it in a comprehensive way. Thank you, Catherine. We can go back to the PowerPoint. So this goal is really meaningful because it's allowed me, in my first year as superintendent, to engage with a real broad spectrum of community members. You've heard me talk about Granby Men's Breakfast and Granby Women's Breakfast. It has brought me so much joy to attend and take part in those monthly opportunities. I can't go every month, but when I go, I soak it all up. And we've had a really positive, across-generational opportunity to provide a window into our school district, which is coming back to Hold. I received an email this morning from the two leaders of the Men's Breakfast inviting me back for next year and asking, "What else can we learn about school?" And I met this morning with Karen Dickerson, who is the Granby Women's Breakfast president. I met with her this morning in my office, and she heard about all the great things I was doing at the Lions Club in this place and that place, and what can we do? And so what can I do is I can bring students, and I can bring faculty, and I can showcase the good work of the school, so that when taxpayers go to cast a ballot, or when folks are out in the community and they're needing to weigh in on something that impacts our schools, they have these positive experiences. So it's really been a source of joy for me and pride in this goal. So we've accomplished quite a bit since December in this particular goal as well, and I think I've spoken to each of them. And the work still to come is really working with some of our internal systems for communication. We've done a nice job this year assessing and identifying areas for growth, and now we need to get to work on them in the internal capacity, systems for staff and information for staff. Intergenerational opportunities for mentoring and volunteerism. We've started it. We have a little seed in district already with a mentoring program, but we really want to grow that. And then I have in my mind this thing called Super Chats, where little kids and big kids would interview me with questions, and we would share them out into the community, like those cool, like, shows on TV in the older days, you know? So I have this whole image in my head that we're gonna get our high school students in the broadcast studio to get to fruition for me. So we have a few more ideas. So that's an update on the accomplishments related to sort of the foundation of our work for student achievement and academic growth. Clearly, the data is important for that particular goal, and we'll continue to talk about that. And then the work that we've done around community engagement and communication as our second goal for the year. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Superintendent Burke. I just wanted to go back to all the work that went into the curriculum being posted online, and I wanted to comment on that. That is an enormous amount of work and data that is available to everyone in the public. You can access that. And I know we get a lot of questions in regard to our curriculum, and this resource is there for all, and I wanted to thank you for the amount of effort it took to do this, to make this information available. You know, when it comes to transparency, that's just about as transparent as it can get. So thank you for that substantial effort with this that we know is an issue, and for all the other efforts in regard to communication. There's been enormous strides made with communicating with members of the community who don't have children in our school system, which is fantastic. The Ask GPS, I know that resource is just starting to become a little bit more popular. So to the extent that board members can put it out there and let people know that that's available, if they have a question, that would be great, because that really is a very direct way to get a question answered, provide a link if necessary, things like that. So thank you for all this work. It's much appreciated.
And just to clarify, it stands for Ask Granby Public Schools, not, "They're not gonna get directions."
Probably not.
It was a well-played word, and I thought it was fun. But yeah, and it's Ask GPS because I don't answer those questions alone. I need to collaborate with teachers and leaders across the district to give you the accurate information, and we do, we connect with links or pass minutes through a board meeting or whatever it might be, but we all want to make it easy for people. So I appreciate those comments. And I also just wanted to mention that this is a work in progress. You know, we will continue to grow through the grade levels. High school's a little different, because you have syllabus and you have, you know, course...
Selection.
Selection and handbook, I mean, the course catalog. You have a lot of other resources, but we absolutely can work to streamline those and make it easier, book lists and resources. So it's a work in progress.
Is the high school course catalog online, or is it a digital?
It is online. It is online, and it can be more dynamic. It's not, it's online, but it's not dynamic. Is that, I mean, dynamic, I don't mean dynamic, like, woo! I mean, dynamic, like, interacting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, that's, we're still working on that.
Correct. I imagine that's gonna involve this undertaking.
It's very dynamic. We offer some awesome courses.
Yeah.
I was looking for the word where it changes with you.
But there are substantial course offering, so that's gonna take a little bit of time.
Yes. So the middle school documents are a work in progress. So those should be posted by the end of the year. And the high school, the best way to access right now is through that program of studies, which is on the high school website. And we do have goals to make that a much more dynamic slash interactive experience online.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Nice one. Of course, so the course of studies for the high school, that's, you can get that through the high school website.
Yes.
Is there a way to link?
To this curriculum page? Is it linked, Jen, you know?
It is not yet.
No, that's a great suggestion. I have a feeling Andy's listening, and he'll probably do that tomorrow.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any additional questions? Thank you. Moving along to business requiring action. Before we do that, can I take a pause? And I'm gonna take a little bit of liberty here with the agenda, because Katie didn't give an opportunity to get an update on what's going on in the high school.
Do we stay?
It's not on the agenda. So we missed it somehow or another. So I wanna, technically, I would need a motion for the student.
Motion.
For student.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
I move that we alter the agenda to include the student representatives report.
Do I? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The agenda is amended, so Katie can provide us, and we apologize for that.
So starting off strong with sports, boys lacrosse remains undefeated at 9-0, and they are currently the only undefeated team left in the state. They've also won their NCCC regular season title. Their next game will be tomorrow against Southfield at home at 4:00 p.m. Girls lacrosse will also play at Southfield tomorrow, but at Southfield at 5:30. Boys baseball will have a game on Thursday at home against the Masters School at 4:15, and Friday at Windsor Locks at 4:00. Softball played today at home against East Granby, and their next game will be tomorrow at home against Southfield. Boys tennis had a game today against Avon at home, and their next game will be tomorrow against Ellington at 3:45. Girls tennis will also play tomorrow, but at home against Ellington at 3:45. Interact had a meet today against Ellington, and their next track meet will be Wednesday at home at 4:00. And for current events and news, the band and choir attended a festival Disney music competition in Orlando. We spent three amazing days at the parks, and both groups did really well in their categories. Empty bowls was last Friday, and a bunch of bowls that were created in our art room or throughout our community were used to help raise money for the Granby and Heartland Food Bank, and I'm proud to report that we raised over $3,000.
Awesome.
Junior planning meetings are underway and have begun in our guidance department, and they're helping our juniors prepare for wherever the future takes them. The Spring Band Concert is tomorrow night at 8:00 p.m. in the auditorium. Foreign Food Fest is Friday evening, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., in the cafeteria. Is a $5 entry-free fee, and all you can eat, crepes, dumplings, quesadillas. This whole event has been planned for months by our language honor societies. And next week, we began our AP testing for our students, so best of luck to everyone who's taking them. And we are also quickly approaching senior prom, which is May 17th at The River View.
And if I remember correctly, Chase is cooking for the international food thing.
Yeah.
Katie, you had an opportunity to go to Disney, right? Didn't you? Where the hell was it?
It was amazing.
Yeah.
It was so much fun.
Any favorite parks?
Okay, my favorite park was Magic Kingdom, but my favorite ride is an Epcot. It was so much fun.
Excellent.
The trail.
Yeah.
The Galaxy. And you did a great job keeping us all updated through the social media.
Yeah. It was so much fun running the group.
Instagram. It was really great.
You have fun running your Instagram.
Yeah, it's fun. She interviewed students and teachers, she was posting how they were doing. It was really great. And what's the, it's not you personally, tell them what it is that they can follow.
It is.
It was awesome.
It is @GMHSBand underscore.
Yeah, @GMHSBand.
On Instagram.
Most of our athletic teams and school groups have an Instagram, and they are really awesome. They do a good job. They're appropriate, they're celebratory, and they highlight all this amazing stuff our kids do. They're really great.
Well done, Katie.
Thank you, Katie, and my apologies for that getting pushed a little bit further along than usual, so. Thank you. All right, moving on to business requiring action. The minutes from the April 17, 2024 meeting, drive a motion?
I move that the Granby Board of Education approve the minutes of the April 17, 2024 Board of Education meeting.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you, Karen. All right, moving on to committee reports. Board standing committee reports, Curriculum Policy, Technology, Communication did meet today. Karen?
Yes, so in our curriculum subcommittee meeting, Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Parsons shared a lot of great information with us. I'll just give you a few highlights. She mentioned that the plan for the ELA pilot programs moving forward, there will be two teachers piloting each program in the fall. She said that the third learning walk of the year took place this past Monday, on the 29th, and both Liz Barlow and Chairperson Monica Logan participated, and they said it went very well, and they enjoyed visiting the classrooms. Assistant Superintendent Parsons also told us about the Elementary Art Show, which recently took place at the Granby Public Library, and also shared with us community conversations that have been occurring. These are events for communities and families. One was about social media, and another one is coming up tomorrow. It's called QPR, and it is about suicide prevention, and it's at Wells Road tomorrow. Is that correct? At 6:00 p.m. And QPR training at this point is mandatory for first responders. And let's see, she also shared with us the draft policy 5131.911 on school climate, and said that it is primarily, we're moving into restorative work, and it looks like we will likely have the coming school year, 2024-25, be a learning year, during which we then will, the following year, implement the new policy for the 2025-26 school year, the main difference being the definition of bullying and the use of restorative practices. And so far, the middle school staff is the only school where all of the staff has been trained, although in the other schools, there have been some staff members trained as well. And lastly, she shared with us about new teacher supports. These are the current supports in place for new teachers and the ways in which the district strives to retain effective teachers.
Thank you so much, Karen. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Finance will meet on May 15. Moving along with related reports, Crack Cave, I don't know if you have anything to share there. Granby Education Foundation, obviously, we all know that the B occurred a few weeks ago. It was a great event. We'll see if there's any additional updates from GEF as well. The calendar events is attached in, back, you heard a lot about it, the variety of events coming up, AP exam, the Foreign Food Festival, lots of... events coming up, EPA exams, the foreign food festival, lots and lots of end of the year concerts and, you know, to the extent that anybody is interested, please, please look it up online. You can attend a variety of different, a variety of different opportunities to attend. And then, ooh, the eighth grade Washington DC trip is coming up at the end of May. That's very exciting. Senior prom as well. So feel free to check the agenda for events that are of interest to you. Do we have any board member announcements? Action items? Do I have a second, Karen?
The only thing I heard tonight was we talked about grading, communication of expectations and homework is going to be an area of growth for next year and I saw that's already included in the communication plan for the next three years.
Superintendent's report.
So I've shared a lot already. But I want to start with a big shout out to Dave Pelig and David Pelig Jr. and some friends of baseball who painted the dugouts over the weekend. They look really awesome. They gave them a little facelift, a little refresh. They trimmed some trees, they repaired some broken wood. So just, I really just want to recognize that. I think that's really awesome. I love it when our community rallies around each other in support. So big thank you. If you follow me on my social media, you will see the photos and I do list all of the people there, but it was, it was really great. So thank you for that. Gee, I had an awesome Granby. Jen Parsons and I were there in costume and we tried to answer some. Angie Buckle was part of our team. We were underdressed as compared to Mr. Pelig and his team where Mr. Fiorentino was Taylor Swift herself, so that was pretty impressive.
Completely go-go boots.
Exactly. And we ultimately lost the costume component of the evening to Chase Alexander and his friends who were excessive B street. Yeah, they were. It was very cute. So that was a lot of fun and I was happy to be a part of my first Granby. Much of what I have on my list has already been mentioned, so I'll just highlight a couple additional items. Kelly Lane displayed their artwork at the Granby Public Library. That was really wonderful. Wednesday evening, I was not able to attend, but I know that Assistant Superintendent Parsons did. As we mentioned, as a part of my goals update, I did hold my last superintendent's community conversation that was on April 23rd. It was really well attended and felt like a really meaningful, purposeful conversation. That was a really great way to end. And we do record all of them and post them on the website. So they're there and people are interested to see what was discussed. Our new Director of Finance and Operations, Nikki Stevenson, starts Monday, May 13th and she will be with us at the next board meeting on May 15th to facilitate the finance committee as well as join us here for the full board. Testing is wrapping up, as I shared, and we will be presenting data shortly. The Washington DC trip is super exciting. That's from May 21st, I believe. Yep, the 21st to the 23rd. I have been mentioning the save the date for the retirement party on June 5th. I know so many of our board members work in our engagement school, so it's hard to take time off, but that is a real celebratory event if you could join us. And just a quick reminder that the last board meeting of the year is going to take place on Tuesday, June 18th, because that Wednesday, June 19th is Juneteenth. That is a holiday and we will not be holding a board meeting that evening. So we do plan to hold that last June meeting, primarily due to our new Director of Finance and Operations and really wanting to make sure we have a solid end to the school year and we have a few final reports to share with you. So I know that's right at the start of vacation for many of you, so I did just want to mention that. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Superintendent Burke took most of what I was going to comment on, so there's not, there's not too much for me to.
You should coordinate.
The one thing I really did want to mention in a little bit more detail was the learning walk that Liz and I had the pleasure of attending with Jen Parsons and a variety of other teachers this past Monday. And I know we mentioned the learning walks and I don't know if we always describe exactly what we're doing. And what we're doing is we're going into each school with an objective eye and observing what we see, what we think might need improvement based upon the C, understanding that we're only getting a glimpse of what's actually occurring in the classroom at that particular moment and try to offer constructive feedback. And we really had a great day. I was thrilled with the variety of things that I was seeing going on in our schools. I saw excited kids. I saw kids working hard. I saw kids learning. I saw kids working together quite a bit, which was really great. There was a lot of facilitation and discussion among students. There was a lot of passionate activity by teachers. There was a Spanish class in the middle school that I kind of wanted to stay in. I think it was a really good class and everyone in that classroom was up and engaged and it was a lot of fun. So it really offered an opportunity to get a glimpse of what's going on in the classrooms throughout the course of the day and seeing the hard work that our teachers do. So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Parsons, for putting that together. You really are very excellent at doing all that coordination and then providing us with guidelines on how to, what to look for and how to look for it. So thank you.
Okay. We are approaching the end of the year and one of the things that we have to do is review our superintendent and do a little contractual evaluation. So we do have a reason to go into executive session tonight. I will need to amend the agenda.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend the agenda and to go into executive, amend the agenda to, is it a second motion to go into executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation?
Motion to amend first and then?
Motion to amend.
Do I have a second for a motion to amend?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion's amended and then we need a motion to adjourn into the executive session.
Now a motion to adjourn and move to the executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We are now going to, Pete, enter an exception.
And you go over.